To get everyone in, but we felt that it would be more authentic. It would tell the story of what people are doing, what they need. The other piece that's added that wasn't before is outreach. And I think outreach is one thing that people don't think of with the senior center. So I just really wanted to make sure folks knew that fuel assistance, fuel assistance, housing, shine, risk management, counseling, connecting with resources, developing things like we had with an assisted living presentation and fraud, which believe it or not, people are still being affected. That's almost every week. We have either a new fraud, a new angle, and so that's being addressed. So outreach is now starting to track based on hours and times, you know, so that we can look at that when we look at other grants. This coming year, we'll be looking at the digital age. Not only the My Senior Center platform, but we're trying to, through different grants and the foundation, which is our funding arm for the senior center, is really contributing to things like we're going to buy a GoPro. So when people, Open Space Committee, we're partnering with, the library, people going to museums, they can wear a GoPro and we're going to start a webpage. And the hope is people like, "I want to be part of that," and, you know, they'll sign on. We're also going to start classes, you know, with iPads and computers and kind of get back to that, that kind of stopped before the pandemic. So it's trying, what we're trying to do is really maintain the things that work, you know, but also kind of explore where are we at now? Where are we at with, hate to use it, but baby boomers, Gen X, you know, that are kind of coming up and going, "Well, how does this work for me?" So the challenge is really saying, "How do you meet the needs of four decades of folks, you know, that are involved?" And I think we're being very successful with that. Programming-wise, we're slowly opening more. So, you know, wellness is definitely our cornerstone with yoga, Tai Chi, bones in balance. Right now, we're trying to partner more with people because, you know, you get things free that way. But Life Path has a balance group that they've brought in, and there's over 20 people, you know, that are involved with that. So really kind of reading the room, so to speak, and seeing what people are asking for and what they're doing. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, you know, other than budget time, to just check in and let you know that numbers are increasing. We do have, not just more volunteers, we've added about five volunteers this year, but also new members. And a lot of this, the majority of this, is thanks to the Council on Aging members. The Council on Aging members in each town, as you know, make up the Board of Directors for the senior center. So I'm lucky enough to have three. And the folks in Buckland have been working with Teddy and Outreach and visiting people and helping out. We've had people drive people to appointments if need be. So they're really becoming a very active part of the community and contributing with that, and we're relying on them a lot. So I will, you know, forward some of my senior center data for you to look at. And my hope is, before we get to budget time, if there's things you really want to know, you know, whether it's outreach or how are we using these funds? How many people from Buckland are actually doing this? What are the volunteers doing? What kind of credit are we getting? That, you know, the goal, as I said, when I started, was to be authentic and very open. So, you know, I really encourage people at some point to come visit, you know, the senior center and see what we are doing. If you have Facebook and Instagram, I really hope that you would connect with us because I only have 97 followers and I'd like to have more. But, you know, kind of bridging the gap of social media versus also the things we're doing with mailings and in person and phone calls, trying to encompass it all, but I do ask people to remember, you're talking literally a 40-year span of folks that were trying to develop programming and were trying to address their needs while the same time supporting what's going on politically and things that people have lost, you know. Post-pandemic, a lot of entitlements and things went down. We can't keep up with fuel assistance. We can't keep up with so many of the hardships that people have. So partnering with a lot of community organizations, but also with the state reps, they've been very kind of supportive if we call and say, you know, "We're having, people are having trouble with fuel assistance. People are having, we have a housing crisis." So those things, you know, we feel that people are listening. And, but again, it's the Council on Aging in Buckland that has really kind of carried a lot of things through being involved, and they'll speak on that. But, so I just wanted to kind of let you know, things are great. And, you know, thank you. Thank you for the support that you've always given. And I really do encourage you to come by, ask questions, you know, see what we're doing. That would be great.
I thought the program we had last night on estate planning was very successful. It was a full house.
Thirty-eight people. And, you know, as we kind of come back from COVID, my thing was, okay, 40 could fit in there. I've only seen pictures of the days of 60 people that were in there. I'm like, "How'd you do that?" I don't think we're ready for that. But, you know, having, really kind of tapping into, what are people concerned with right now? You know, what do we need to address and do that? And in the coming winter, we'll be doing some hybrid programming. Zoom didn't work so well during the pandemic, but I think everyone was unprepared. Now that people are more aware and more digitally aware and have devices of their own, you know, we're hopeful that if someone gets stuck, and especially with the weather, as I've learned here, things shut down very quickly in the hills. If that happens, people don't have to feel as disconnected as they did. So that's the direction and the focus and the goals that we're trying to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
What was the feedback that you've been getting from the seniors on the new programs, the My Senior Center program, for instance?
It's been good. I mean, at first, you know, what we tell people is, "I'm not tracking you. I'm tracking the town, the events, the things," so we can reevaluate. We also utilize it to get funding, you know. This goes to the state, so we can evaluate where we're at. And I'd say 99% have been okay with that. And being able to be transparent with what we're doing with it, you know, I'm trying to have our, we have staff meetings a few times a month. So the staff meetings, the board meetings, the Board of Directors, even the COAs that do meet, and, you know, Buckland meets regularly. I try and keep all those documents, so if someone came in, "Let me see this." I can provide everything. So I think just that air of transparency. The only thing I think we're faltering on is the big trips. People want to go to Mohegan Sun and things, and that's really pricey. And they're only now starting to open up more with bus companies. So we are working on that. So by spring into next fall, you know, we'll have that. But otherwise, I'm really, really happy with the things that we have incorporated and going for the grants that we have that are really relevant to what we feel the needs are with the folks. And, you know, I know the survey went out a few years ago before I started, and I pay attention to that. I have a copy right on my desk, you know, of like, what do people want? What are they looking for? What do they need? Which sometimes are very different things. So to be able to supply all of those things has been the challenge. But I think that we're good. I think that we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council on Aging.
So is there something, okay. I'm guessing you're bringing the benches forward.
It was supposed to be cookies. But we have been involved in a program called Mass in Motion, which is supposed to benefit seniors and people with dementia and other problems. And by becoming involved with it, we were able to have a very successful ice cream social, which we were able to, we sent out a postcard promoting this thing. And the idea of the ice cream social was how do we spend money on us when we have money to spend? As a result, we got a lot of feedback. People keep coming up to us and saying, "Yeah, when are we having trips? When are we going to shows or whatever? And when are we having more ice cream or other events?" So before we have a meeting to decide on our next event, this ice cream social and meeting with people produced enough that we decided to provide to buy. At first, we thought it would be three benches for the community. But with Heather's expertise and we were able to buy four benches. The idea is to put them along walking paths, places where people can sit and rest for whatever in our beautiful town. So, is there?
The minutes the draft shows where we had originally talked about having them, but I imagine the town will need to wait to have them.
Well.
It's in the bottom of the second paragraph?
Right, right. The four benches that will be placed around town. One at the intersection of Cross and Upper Streets in Upper Buckland, two at the REC area, and one near the Liberty Elm in front of, well, we thought it was supposed to be in front of the church at the corner of Ashfield and Clement Street. But it turns out that's not exactly the place the Liberty Elm is. It's by the gallery. So people who are going to install this have to figure out. It doesn't seem to be a very accessible spot.
No, it's not.
As it is. I mean, under, in front of the church, you could go up the steps right in front of the church and walk over to a bench and see the river. Anyway, that's not my call, but we're bringing it to you folks for specific placement, you know, help with it.
But that church is private property though, right? We can't just put a bench there unless we.
It would be on the sidewalk. It would be on the sidewalk.
A lot of room on that sidewalk, we can't.
So we'll work with, the idea that we've talked about is that with highway and the immediate butters, working to make sure that where the benches are put works for everybody. Ashfield may not be where we put it, and we may save it, we may save that particular bench for when we do the freight yard, where we know we'll have more room up there. But I think a general, you have to accept any modifications to town property. And obviously, these would be on town property. So I think a general approval, acceptance of the four benches funded through the.
Mass in Motion.
Mass in Motion grant. And, you know, the ones.
Placement to follow?
Yeah, I mean.
Final placement.
The one, the one on Cross and Upper, you know, that's a sensitive area. So we'll make sure that we have the neighbors from Cross and Upper present to, you know, have some input into where they think the bench is best, best, best place. And then Highway will do as their top, you know. They're just going to be there to make sure that the things are secure. And then Cindy will work, REC will work with them to figure out where at REC they could go. We're thinking about the trails.
The one concern I would have on Ashville Street is snow removal.
Yeah, 100%, yeah.
That's a real tough spot.
It is. I like your idea. We're doing the railroad yards soon, shortly, well, yeah.
Originally, we thought we had an ideal spot, but now we're realizing that that's not.
It wasn't ours.
But that's, you know, best plans have got to have some flexibility. So that one.
I think that Mike McCusker was talking to Josh because Josh is kind of responsible or has the plaque. There's a plaque that came with the tree. There's a lot that goes on with that tree, apparently, and some obligation of making it a place to sit. So he may also be able to impart some information.
Right.
So that portion is?
We just need a vote that we, we collectively can place benches on public property.
There's a suggestion motion if you want to read it.
Okay. So I would accept the motion to accept the recommendation from the Buckland Council on Aging to place four benches, places to be determined, on various rights of way with the town of Buckland.
Second that.
Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor? I opposed, none.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the great thing about this grant is that we get it every year.
Right.
So.
Now you got to figure out something else to do, too.
Can I ask how we've gotten the grant for this year yet that we know of? Or are we still waiting to hear?
I honestly don't know, Janice. I'd have to go back. Seems like maybe we did, but I would hate to say yes. Remind me. Yes, I know.
All right. So we're a few minutes late, but we have the Buckland REC committee.
I'm going to put this, I'm going to put this on the screen so that, because the paperwork is. So Dana, I don't know if it's an option to be able to share the screen, to do a split screen. If it's too much of a distraction, I can take it down. I just thought it would be easier for people to see at home. Great, thank you.
I think they have them, too. Yeah.
All right, so you guys are here for an update on the pool?
Yep, that's correct. So Cindy has put together a really nice compilation, so I'm going to have her start just to kind of review where the funding sources for this project came from. So go ahead, please go with that first.
So the swimming pool donation account was the original donation account that we had when we received that half a million, first donation way back. And then that was added, too. And then we came, we did the road and all the electrical up there. So that's why we ended up with 27,562. So that's the original donation account. Then we went to the nonprofit, the Friends Group. So they have their donation account. And that $650,000, that was donated towards the pool project. Then we have Park Grant, which was $400,000. And then ARPA funding, so I allocated $500,000 towards that. And $325 was for the pool and $175, which was like eight and a half percent contingency. The town capital expense money was $150,000. That was from a couple of years back. And then the special town meeting, the reallocation of funds for the $300,000. So we've drawn from every one of them, except we're still working on the ARPA money and the $273,851, $84 is what is left out of that $500,000.
And so as of now, the pool project itself, as you know, is almost finished. Really wish it was finished, but we're getting there. So there is still the retainage on the contracted work, and that's sitting at $128,192.53. So that, we know for a fact that will be paid once all of the work is complete and the punch list has been punched. We did have some additional change orders, which I know we'd spoken with all of you about as they kind of came up. The pool cover, we increased the width of the stairs. I mean, nothing crazy. It was all just very practical changes that really, in the end, will make for a much better facility going forward. I mean, I think a lot of these were things that came up as work was going on and, you know, for durability's sake and some aesthetic things. These were sort of the change orders on this first page. So there's, on the bottom, there's four items. The desk, the trench drain, the ceiling fan, and the funnel. Those are four that we're still waiting to get actual confirmation. We don't have the final dollar numbers on that because these were things that were kind of at the end of the project. We've sent multiple requests. We've had multiple conversations with our contractor. He's trying to get all of that information to us, you know, ASAP because he understands that we're trying to finish up so that we can then move on to other projects. So the second page is basically just a recap of what we have spent on the project. The first section here, under money spent from contingency, these are all things that were not change orders, but you'll see that they added up fairly quickly. These are just various soft costs, like recording fees, some of the geotech work that had to happen upfront to make sure that the ground was going to be solid enough to support the pool. And then a lot of testing during the concrete phase. So that's really what this, you know, first section adds up to. And then the remaining sections are all basically just the costs of the contractor, the costs of the architect, which brings us to, you know, the final, final number. So on the last page, when you take what we have left in ARPA funds, subtract what's due to the contractor for the retainage, and then subtract our estimated change orders, it leaves us with a balance that we're hoping to give back to the town of $89,783.33.
That's good news.
I mean, it's good news. It's great. So that's where things stand. Any questions?
Nope. Any idea on when we might be looking at these final numbers for these last few ticket items?
Hopefully, very soon. He just actually, before I came upstairs, had sent an email with a couple of them. But there's one question I have because he's calling it a mop sink when that's not what I had on my list. So I've emailed him back.
Before the end of the year.
I'm like, "Is that like a funnel?" Because I don't think so.
I'm going there.
We both were like.
So anyway, he's working on that. The punch list, you know, we've been having weekly construction meetings on site still. You know, Cindy and I both have emphasized again this morning that weather is turning and we really need to be in a place where we can winterize the area. The water's going to be turned off up there in another month. So there's a few things on their punch that we need to get situated. They know this has to happen. You know, we've tried to keep on it, so.
The changing room is almost, no, it looks really good.
Yep.
And the entryway looks really good.
Good?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you for leading that project. It's been great.
Keep on fighting the good fight. You're almost there.
We know. But we'd like to be on the, everyone would like to be done. I mean, to be perfectly honest, we're all ready to just.
So do we know how we made out throughout the summer?
So I don't have, I have ballpark figures. I don't have like etched in stone. But I will tell you that we were open 51 days for the season, which is like a half a season, from July 15th to September 4. We closed for 10 days, five of them for construction, the other five for weather. I will tell you that we brought in a little over $6,000 in day passes. So that was great. We saw 1,342 of Buckland residents come through and 837 non-residents, a total of 2,179 for the season. So next year, it will be a lot different. We're going to have a full season, which hopefully will try to open up on Memorial Day weekend and then stay open the first couple of weekends in June. And then school gets out, we'll be open right straight through. If I can get the staff on, we will try. We'll try really hard to stay later than Labor Day. Other than that, we've got a lot in our minds going on.
The burning question for most people that are thinking are, when will they be able to purchase passes for next year?
Really, Clint? Let poor Cindy take a breath.
I didn't know if you guys already had something lined up or.
Not yet. I think we need to talk about, I mean, we did well. And I think a lot of those people that did not buy season passes are the ones that bought all the day passes. A lot of positive feedback throughout the season. Everybody's like, "We're definitely buying a pass next year." They just didn't know. I mean, with us opening late, it was only a half of a season. So that's why all those day passes were sold. So I think that's going to switch gears and it's going to go the other way. So we just need to crunch numbers. But we should be, early spring.
We'll be in much better shape for next year, for sure.
So. I didn't, I mean, it was, it was a really good season. It really was.
It seemed like it, so. A lot of pictures, a lot of happy people look like up there, so.
Swimming lessons went really well. We had a really great staff, for sure. Yeah, they were fun stuff.
Hopefully, we can get them all back for next year.
Yeah, they've, pretty much all of them have said they want to come back, so.
I'm not going to ask any more questions. I don't want to get yelled at. Anybody else?
I'm fine, thank you. Thank you for the accurate information about what money went into building this pool. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now, do they have to have a motion for, you see, one was written down in there.
I'm sorry?
A motion was written down here as it's a suggestion. Do I need to have that?
Well, I think that one of the, and first of all, they went easy on you. I got, they weren't easy on me today.
You're listening to.
It's okay. I think that what we're looking to come away with is, what is the acceptable amount of that $89,783 that the board wants to claw back to direct towards our salt shed project?
Because we used money from that.
Yeah, so that, you know, the, it had over, I mean, so it had overwhelming support. I mean, that special time meeting was packed. There was not a single person there that wasn't 100% in favor of using these funds. But here we are. And is the board comfortable with 75? Blowing back 75 and leaving the balance, knowing that it's not going to go anywhere? You know, if the pooled project doesn't need it, it stays, you know. But are we comfortable designating 75 of that 89 for a salt shed?
So I guess my question, because I know you guys want to have it all done and be able to move on. Don't roll your eyes.
There was no eye roll, I promise.
I would maybe think along the lines of, you know, could we maybe hold off on the desk until right before you guys get ready to open for next year?
The desk is already in. All this is done.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So the desk, the ceiling fan, that stuff is already all in? We just don't have a bill on it yet?
Correct.
Do you perceive for any?
And my desk is literally like a little.
Eighty-nine thousand dollars. We'd like to recruit all of it back for the project.
Right, of course.
We're saying, do you perceive anything that is going to happen?
Well, so really, it's those last few items on the list. I think we're pretty much in the ballpark on these. I don't think we're going to see a huge, you know. I think 75 is more than safe. I think you're probably going to end up more with, probably close to that whole amount. But I think it would make us feel better if there was still a little bit sitting there.
I have to work with them every day.
I agree, that way, it's easier to leave some money in than to have to come back and give it to you. So 75 seems to be a reasonable amount.
I think Cindy and I were both comfortable with 75. All right, chair.
Okay. So we're agreeing at 75? So I would, after a motion to authorize the pool building committee to use up to, hopefully $11,000? No, $14,000.
So you can do a little math here.
Of the pool contingency budget to complete the pool construction project.
Second that.
And further, that the balance.
Be returned.
Be returned to Heather.
Be returned to the.
Be returned to the salt shed.
Yes.
Initiative.
Yes.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to make sure that, because when we do our ARPA reporting, we'll, we'll have to have it recorded in the minutes that the select board voted what all of the dollars get spent on. So having it in the minutes is helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? There are none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We are still on our four-minute clock? And we have Mr. McCusker with the Bike Park Ad hoc Building Committee.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello.
Did you get these up there? Oh, okay.
Over there.
All right. Can you have this here?
They have copies, the small copies, but if you, if you want to give them the big one to look at.
I'm good.
Okay, I'm fine here.
I'm, I'm good with this.
I'm fine with this.
Leave it all stuffed. So, thank you for spending some time with us. Shelburne has a Buck, has a pocket park and now Buckland's going to have a pocket park. So I favor the idea of calling this the Buckland Side Pocket Park. And you've probably heard, and I erroneously myself referred to it as a bike park. And that's not fair because a bike park in this day and age apparently is a pump track, you know, where the kids go up and down and like a skate park. They have bike parks that are like that and they're called bike parks. So we don't want to call this a bike park. But anyway, it's a, it's Buckland Side's park with a, with a theme of bicycles. And Woody and I and Ben and Marie and Jeremy are part of the committee that's been working on this for some time. We're pretty excited. This, these drawings, this just came to us from Walt Kudniewski Associates. Walt himself has been donating all of his time preparing the concept that, and he agreed to donate his time, but if it comes to a point where we're, and now we are at a point where we are coming up with more firm ideas and they're getting concrete and hard-lined, I guess is what's his language, then he is paying for somebody to be doing these kinds of things. So there is an expense to that, which we have, thanks to Whit Sanford, we have funds to do that.
And the Franklin County CDC that, who, who is raising the money with me.
All right. I have no idea. I'm totally just big.
I can't just write grants. I have to, there has to be a place to have it managed and so forth, so.
So what we're looking at here is, and I should just tell you a couple of the ideas. The prevailing idea is to take a prominent location in Buckland in the Shelburne Falls Village, which has been unsightly in divisive embankment to a centrally located garden destination. And where it's intended to provide a, a gathering space. We like, I like, we all wrapped around the idea of this being a bicycle-themed thing. So that if there's art, that's going to be there. It'll be like bicycle sculpture. We're going to have a mechanical station so that if you're out for a ride, you're coming up from East Hampton and whoa, and you maybe you struggle to get there because something's going wrong with your derailleur, but when you get to this place, there's a, there would be a pipe either on the, on the ground or coming out of a wall with cables and tools on it. So you can, because you don't carry all these tools with you, right? So, so there's going to be one of those there. Bicycle racks. We have gathering spots. There's no indicating here yet where there will be, but there will be benches and tables. What we're looking at here is, this is just a sort of a sample idea. Nobody's wet to it at all, just. And that pavilion would be here. And there would be benches and tables and chairs. This is the entrance here, probably in everybody's way, somebody's way. This is a, a proposed crosswalk up to a landing area. It's something like eight by ten. It's a big area to be landed. This is just, stays, I don't know if that's blacked out, what they've decided here that would be, but I'm not sure yet. But there's a curb here, which is called a road curb, so that a person could pull up in here for a minute. There's no parking in here, but you could pull up. This is where all the snow's going to go in the winter time. So this is a very gradual kind of ramp up here and to a terrace where there'll be, like I said, cables, stairs, benches, what have you. And this will be a pavilion, which we propose would have electricity in it, so not, not much would be needed. But, so that's the essence of it. We were delighted to hear from Heather just very recently that the Depot Street project is coming on very nicely and that's, that was critical to whatever we could be doing here because there are drainage and water issues. And so they are being addressed. That being said, we are also addressing, in case there's any sea bidge or water coming up, there are two gathering places. Here's a drainage swale here and with a riprap going through here. So if water does come, it'll go gathered there and go here. And there will be a drain here and a surface drain as well, but we're trying to let the water go back into the water table. But if it doesn't, it can be caught in a drain there and go and connect with, there's a, I think there's somewhere in this vicinity and also over here somewhere, there's, there are two street drains. So, and here's another gathering area where a few riprap bank erosion control here, same thing. It'll try to get reabsorbed as we can. If we can't, then we end up connecting with that street drain down there. Do you have the one that shows the, or what it looks like, this one? Oh, good.
Don't have it in color.
You don't have, you have this one, do you? Yeah, there we go. Okay, so here's what it's going to generally look like here. You can see Shelburne Falls Artisan Showroom up there. Talk me down. Let me bring you over to the wood. Okay, that's good. Thank you. So this is the pavilion and this is a proposed spiral staircase, which really only goes to there, but there's, this plaza would be fun to kind of make some cosmetic improvements there. And this would be, there would be a very short walkway, as you can see over here from, from the tower, spiral staircase over to Depot Street. And that's what it would look like here, by the way. Here's the river, Conway Street. And you will be amazed when you, if you stand down here such as this person is and the view that you don't have of the water and you go up just this much, you really get to see the whole thing. It's amazing the differences. So it'd be very enjoyable. And, you know, I, I personally see it as, I'm aware that there are some bicyclists a lot coming from all over the place. And this, this will represent, suggest Buckland and Shelburne Falls being favorable and inspiring to, we want bicycles there. And they spend money. I know when we go other places and go back or what have you, we spend money. We do. So that's, that's what we're after here.
And there are places on our side where they can spend money.
Yes.
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 And I would like to add that this is a two-faced project because we don't yet have quite enough money to do the pavilion and the ramps. And so, and we may never get to the. No, the tower. The spiral staircase and, and the view, but we're trying.
So I, I do have actually one quick question, since we're mentioning the spiral staircase. Because this, a lot of this is grant-driven. Would that end up having to be ADA compliant?
No, because it's, your, your tower is accessible by, on the flat from Depot Street. Because the, I can't, there's a ramp that goes out from Depot Street to the tower, but anybody can access.
Well, I was, to answer your question, say that we will comply with any requirements. Yeah. And if it's just like, you can't do this because it's inaccessible, then we can't do it. But it's, it's the dream that we have now at this point.
So it's, it's funny because when you guys first brought this whole proposal to me, I, I think I was brand new on the board and my gears kind of got turning as well. And I, I love the idea of, you know, having a spot because there are a lot of bicycles that come into town. I've seen an increase in them over the years. One of my questions, and I think it would kind of be beneficial not only to the bikers coming into town, but also to the businesses that has been a major, major ask every time we do any type of work here in town. Have you thought about maybe putting in any public restrooms there?
Because every time, every time a spot has come up in town, it has been, we don't want it there. We want one in town, but we don't want it here. You know, and that's kind of the, the headstone that we've been running into every single time. But I think, you know, having a parking spot for bicycles, people just getting off of, you know, a fifty or a hundred mile bike in, it's the first thing they're probably going to want.
It's a, it's a really small area and we were told in a broad stroke approach when we wondered about that, that you just don't even have close to the mountain room that you need for such a facility there.
Even to do just one public restroom and like a, like a water bubbler station type of.
Yeah, we're thinking about having a water bubbler, a public station.
Because I think if we're going to have water there, I mean, obviously a fill station for people's water bottles and everything else, I, I think would be a fantastic idea.
That's on here, is not, is it not the water station?
Heather, you had one point, you, you thought we would have the waters, be able to do a water station? Yeah. So, because there's water line over there, I guess, yeah.
So plumbing for a water station, plumbing for a restroom, space for a restroom. I mean, that's, that's certainly not going to rule, we shouldn't rule that out.
Yeah.
But we could look at it. So one of the things, I think, your next steps, maybe if you talk about your next steps and, and that I can sort of weigh into that.
So we're meeting with you folks tonight here, obviously. And then in a couple of weeks' time, we, the committee will reconvene again, will absorb what you've said and then we'll get that information to Kudniewski Associates. They will integrate and, and absorb those notions that we have and see what they come back with. We probably, yeah, then there needs to be, we want to have a public information session, which will be sometime in October, later October probably. And then once we'll take that information in and then put it back before Kudniewski Associates and see what they come back, back with. And then that would probably likely be the completion of the concept design. This is nothing like, this is not a, nothing's cast in stone here at all. This is all dreams and notions and.
Like I said, sitting through many, you know, many different projects over the last few years, that's really been one of the big questions.
Yep. Woody has raised enough funds, by the way, so that the next step beyond that would be to, well, we will be given by Kudniewski Associates the next time, when they come back to us, they'll say approximate costs, estimated costs for these different components. Take all of it, if you want to break it up into phase one, two, three, these components would cost this amount of money. And then we'll see, based upon how much money we have in hand, we will let proceed, maybe next building, construction time in the spring, possibly, we could proceed with. And you want to talk about how much money we have?
Yep. We have just shy of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars with two grants pending, one for fifty K and the other for thirty, that could be applied to an engineer ring study and construction plan, so that that will all be taken care of. Once we've had the public meetings, you'll pay all your major input and we kind of know where we're going for next summer. How far we get with the amount of money that potentially we could have two hundred K minus, let's say fifty for the engineering and the construction plan. So we could have a hundred and fifty K to do this part of the project.
But I, I'm going to reiterate, but I think restrooms are really important. Where, where are people going to go if they come into town? You know, are they going to go to McCusker's? Are they going to go to, not your house, but you know what I mean? You know, the brewery or whatever.
Just a walk, a walk.
And the thing is, I was talking with someone about this yesterday and they're saying how they're, it's not cheap, but there are self-cleaning toilets.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that would, you know, because that's going to be an issue. You don't want people to come and then they do some kind of review on, on the internet saying, well, we went there and it was really stinky and crappy, you know? But I, I think, you know, if you, I, I don't know which is more important, the pavilion or restrooms, you know? I mean, if you're serving people who are biking through town, I think, I think they would vote for the restrooms.
Especially since we have a nice pavilion right here as well, so.
Yeah. So, by the way, we anticipate, I know when I'm a cyclist with friends like these guys behind me, we go someplace, we park our bikes and then we look for the restaurants, you know, and we look for the stores and we eat and drink and buy and then get back on our bikes and leave. So I'm really seeing the truth of this. This park is probably going to end up being used eighty percent by just local folks, which is great. But it also will have the benefit of being attractive to cyclists from outside the area. And that's why the, the idea of doing a theme, like within, possibly within the fence railings, we could do some bicycle shapes, you know, that are sort of a modernistic bicycle, but some sculpture, just a theme to make it look and inviting to bicyclists. One of the key things that we didn't mention about, so Woody's already raised a whole pile of money and it's almost complete, all the mosaics. I don't know if you've seen about those yet, along from, the first one is at the John Nally Park, is it?
Yeah.
And on down to the Old Mill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I haven't seen him yet, but anyway.
I have a difference of opinion about the name for the park.
Oh, we don't talk about that.
No, 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 no. Basically, Cindy has created nine of ten murals that are going up.
Looks like murals.
Yeah. The tenth is going at Pocket Park. But I think this could be called the Riverfront Pocket Park so that you could promote it as something that's significant in this side of the village because it's supposed to connect, her murals connect us from the Bridge of Flowers down to the Mill. And we all know that Brad and the Mill are doing all kinds of stuff down there by the river. And it just, to me, it makes sense to do that. The, the last mural that Cindy's doing is not going to be wildlife. It's going to be something different.
Sort of. Heather, can you, can you bring this back up again, please?
One point too to consider is runners. We have a lot of runners that come through our town.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, where, is a potential location for, and it would be almost human in full size. It would be here as one option and one possibility. And the artwork that's been selected is, is a bicycle built for four. Have you seen us at all yet? It's a bicycle built for four. It's a anti-cartoonyish kind of a.
I think you brought pictures in, didn't you?
I think you did, yeah. It's a caricature kind of thing. We have four people on the bicycle and the first, well, it doesn't matter what order, but the first one I'm thinking of is Queen Nefertiti, then the Statue of Liberty, Wonder Woman, and then a native-born local cyclist, is that the fourth person? So, you know, again, attracting the bicycle-themed concept. The other, another option of a place that it might go, if that doesn't seem to work out for whatever reason, is on the, the big granite wall, when you first come down onto, onto Conway Street, on Conway Road, on the right, there's a big wall, they're leading right up, right? The wall probably stops about right here. It's a big wall. And that's another option and a possibility to direct people to this area. But, you know, I think we really should be giving serious consideration, maybe more so than we have, but we had, definitely talked about it. But, you know, I, we can ask Walt and would they, how they, we're not supposed to be digging in this thing, so we're just putting stuff on top and that's it. There's a reason for that. So there's a, what do you call it? Bedrock and everything. It's not going to be like, so, but we should look at it. And I propose that we do. I don't know if any of the guys, others have any? Ben, you guys have any? Any to add?
No, I think that.
The, the public facilities are needed on both sides.
Right.
And.
Well, and, and that's the thing, is right now Shelburne doesn't have it.
Right.
So we'd be pulling people out of the Shelburne side to come over here to use the facilities. But at the same time, now that they're over here, they're going to also go into the other shops as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I think it's something that's going to be used by everyone, you know? And not just, you know, not just your bikers, but everybody will be able to.
Am I running over to that little red plastic portage on there? Am I running over to that little red plastic Ford agenda today?
There's a lock on it. Like standing there going, no!
That's for the construction there on the bridge.
Would the town be willing to make, you know, whether it was self-cleaning, even a self-cleaning one is still gonna require us in some degree of maintenance. And so would the town be up for, you know, making sure that it stayed, stayed at least every few days? Checked in on to make sure it was relatively clean and well-supplied with sanitizer and toilet paper?
I mean, I think that's something that, you know, we could, we're already, do we have any type of cleaning crew for here yet?
Not, not that would take on public bathrooms.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not to say that we can't budget for that, but it would be a budget item. It'd be a budget item that we are not currently budgeting for, so it would be an increased cost to our current, again, not, that's not a no, it's just, it's just that something we really would have to look at how that, which is where I was gonna sort of go next with the conversation, is I think the first step is to determine whether or not this site can accommodate a bathroom. Under, you know, Mike is very correct, we cannot dig, so it has to be, any, any sort of plumbing has to be...
To keep it ergonomic, right?
Right, has to be on, up, above, above ground, but to make sure that it's A V A compliant. And that, so I like the idea, I've, I mean, we absolutely need facilities, and if we could do them here, that would be fantastic, 'cause it is so centrally located. But I think that we do have to make that determination, and I think that we'll, now that, um, the, uh, the architect has had a chance to do these design work, we'll send it back to G C G, who has been our designer on the Depot Street and Frey Yard project, and have him take a look at it and see how and where a bathroom facility could fit on that site. And we've talked about my, um, G C G engineers and Walt sort of staying communication and working through this, so that by the time it gets to your public information session, we can have an answer, yes, we're gonna move forward with some sort of bathroom facility, or no, the lot just simply can't accommodate it. And then we'll come back to you with a final plan. D H C D, or what used to be D H C D, which is the Department, the Department of Community Development and, in, in housing, um, they manage the community block grant program, which is what we're using to do Depot Street and the Frey Yards. They have indicated that they are amenable to funding bathrooms, and, 'cause it is, it is an economic development, it is a, um, a, a, a need within communities. So whether or not we could fund that through a C D B grant, keeping in mind that that's another full year out, you know? So, is, is somebody, you know, we're talking phases, but I think the next step is for me to get these down to G C G now that we've talked to them about bathrooms, because anything that they do on Depot Street is certainly gonna impact this, so we wanna make sure that they're in the conversation anyway.
That was the first question, I think I asked Mike, when you first came up with, that the architects have got to work together, or the contractors, because Depot Road, which is the town project, which is gonna happen here, I, I don't think it'll affect that, but they were talking about drainage and stuff, and hopefully it's not, well, let's just drain it right down into the park. So I'm glad to get into, I'm glad to get together seriously, and they'll probably make it work well, so.
Yeah, and by the way, there is on Conway Street, it doesn't show up on anything that we put in front of you here, but there is, there are bike lanes, both sides, that's, it fits like that. Questions, queries?
That's great.
Thank you. Appreciate your support and we will...
Thank you for coming in with your designs. You guys are certainly on the right track.
It's fine.
One step at a time, yeah.
And we have one super grant to go after that could potentially get us to the tower and all, and that's through M O T, through Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism. They had, I don't know whether they still do, something called a travel, a destination grant. They're trying to give communities money to have destinations within their villages, so.
Well, certainly for, but...
Well, I think by the time you're done with this entire project, I think that fourth person on your bike is probably gonna be what?
No, it's actually Cindy.
Cindy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, yeah.
Do we need a motion for this?
No, that was info only, right?
Take it under advisement.
Thank you.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna accept any plans until the two engineers get together, because the Depot Road takes priority.
And I also think that if they're gonna have a public information session and any feedback that they get from that process and gets incorporated, you would wanna see those revisions as well, so.
Good evening, Ms. Moderator.
Good evening, Mr. Phillips. How are you all?
Wonderful, and it looks like you're next up on our agenda.
I'm next and I'll be quick.
Sorry, we're fifteen minutes behind.
You have this letter already out, well, all right, never mind then.
Just letting you know that we're fishing.
So, uh, I'm here because as the moderator, under the bylaws, I'm supposed to convene the, um, all boards' meetings a few times a year and then come to the very next posted meeting of the select board to tell you what happened. This is a part of my job I have been quite remiss in over the last fourteen years, but Heather and I have pinky swore we're gonna do it from here on out. We got going well, but then COVID hit, so, um, so basically I'm giving you here more information than you probably need about. We had a really great turnout, we had wonderful, wonderful batch of people, thank you both for being there. And, uh, and went around, gave a lot of updates and got questions answered from different people's perspectives. And then on the last page, you've got a few things as follow-up issues that were identified. The first being something you've already talked about, the ZIP Code Committee idea. I got a long email from Larry afterwards that I forwarded to you, who would like to be involved. I mean, Langford on, on the ZIP Code Subcommittee, there was a pretty much uniform enthusiasm for the concept of a newsletter and sense that for a lot of committees, not being able to reach people with the real information, especially in today's world where there's lots of sources of unreal information, was really a problem. And also, this has come up as part of the age-friendly work that your Mass In Motion-funded grant has been working on as well, to think about how, how helpful it is for people to know where to get the information, get it in paper, have it on their fridge, you know, or if they want an email, whatever.
That's on our agenda tonight.
Excellent, all right, well, Joan and I and Abby Strauss were all interested in being part of that conversation. And I'm interested in, well, it's on your agenda anyway, so when there's a follow-up meeting, I'd love to be involved, and I think we can learn...
You'll be up next, so you can stick around.
We can learn some things from Shelburne as well.
Although I have to tell you, I got contacted by the librarian, Lori Wheeler, and she said that someone who was at our meeting, and I don't know who it was, thought the newsletter would be for both towns. And I said, no, 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 this is Buckland-centric, it's a municipal newsletter.
Right, well, I think there's a large sense that since our local newspaper died here, the one that was for Shelburne Falls, it is really unfortunate that when there are these things set up, they tend to be government-specific, you know? And so I can see why people would have thought that it would be helpful, but I know, I know that that's not what we were talking about at the meeting.
Right.
But you could certainly, I don't know if you ever read the Shelburne one that existed for about a year, but easily eighty percent of it applied to our side of the river.
Right, I, I met with Lori and Andrew Baker, and Tricia was on Zoom, and they're, Lori's interested in getting a grant through the library, so it'd be, there would indeed be a community newsletter for both sides. Right now, we're talking about what we're gonna name it. Oh, great. But, um, yeah, because Andrew was doing something for the town there, and then he went to the town for money, and then he said, uh-oh, they, they won't fund a community newsletter, they'll only do a municipal newsletter. So this is, um, this is something in the works.
Great, great, okay. I think that there would, I can see a way in which there could be sections that were government-specific to each side, and there could still be things that would be shared in the middle, you know, but, but anyway, let me know how I can be involved, I'd be happy to help.
That's a dangerous...
Well, I, I had one for years. And then we talked about snow removal, gonna, you know, sort of setting community expectations that that will be slow. We talked about the community compact funding, and then the latest best practices that have been resulted, rolled out by this administration include a bunch of age-friendly things that the, again, the age-friendly community group might, might wanna look at. And we talked to the Energy Committee about having people understand more about what the different incentives are right now around mini-splits. Heather encouraged us all to respond when the M V P Committee invites us to be on it. And then, oh, that's funny, I didn't even finish that. Anyway, we were supposed to sign our, our, our legal recommend, you know, our legal acknowledgements of having received the open meeting law and the conflict of interest, so it's counsel what it means, conflict. And then after everyone left, a group of people stayed around and talked about Open Space and Rec Committee and working on the, capitalizing on some of the work that the Buckland Riders Group has done in, in actually identifying walking trails that are available in the summer as well as in the winter for snowmobiles. And, and while I know we just got funded to do some cool work through the Woodlands Partnership down at Cricket Field, it might be a really good next application to that source, because a lot of interest in the kind of trails that exist in some other towns that we don't currently have here. So that's sort of a quick summary, but you can see exhaustive notes here of, well, not exhaustive, but what people were talking about. It was really nice to have the Shared Police Department come and report as well.
He was good, Billy King.
Yeah, yeah, he had a great report. So it was a success, we're gonna do it again in a couple months.
Did I think we said twice a year, or did we say quarterly?
People were saying quarterly.
Okay, quarterly, yeah.
I know, right?
But, but if we do have them more frequently, then we can spend perhaps less time catching each other up on all the activity.
Well, and I think where, where, where something like that really would be helpful would be like the conversation you just had. You know, it would be interesting to have the Pollinator Planning Group and the Board of Health and the whoever all talk about that Pocket Park, right? And not just have it be coming here, so when we can make them more regular, we can have them be sort of project-focused where we're actually getting the benefit of the cross-section. Yeah, so I think that's it. I will tell you that there will be a big flu clinic at Mohawk, flu and COVID clinic at Mohawk on the twenty-fourth of October, and many other upcoming clinics as well, if I can put on my work hat first. And all on our website, for cog.org backslash covid.
Yes, yes, I better get them up, I better get a link to, to them on ours.
Anything else, those of you who were there?
I thought it was great. The biggest thing was I liked was seeing those different people and not putting a face to a name and find out exactly what they do, you know, you can say Planning Board all you want, you can say Conservation Board to me all you want, but, you know, it's nice to see the people and they mention a little bit of what they're doing, you know?
Yeah.
So it's kinda nice, that way, I appreciated that very much.
I definitely left there feeling proud of our town, what a great group of people.
Oh, yeah, I, I sent it all the way along.
Yeah.
Like I said that first thing there, it's the, it's these committees we have and these boards that we have, but no, it's never easy having to make decisions, but just to have the information as clear as they put it and, and looking at those faces and saying how trustworthy they are, makes you feel good.
Yeah.
It makes you feel good.
It was nice.
It does.
It's good to see all the people working for the community.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
One thing that did come up through the planning and zoning updates is that they, is that their, um, their floodplain bylaw amendment, as well as their short-term rental bylaw amendments, will be ready this fall. And there's an interest in a fall town meeting, special town meeting, to address the zoning, so.
We'd wanna do that before it gets too freezing cold and dark.
Right, right, but we would have it inside.
That too.
That too.
But also, when people are not up to drive, so.
So...
I think Phoebe's saying she goes into hermit mode when it's cold weather.
I don't, but we are.
The Planning Board has to have a public hearing per, per forty A, and so we'll, we'll, we'll let them get through their public hearing, and then we'll come back with some dates, hopefully sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No long travel, to be scheduled.
Is a, um, uh, did you wanna talk more about the newsletter thing, or?
Well, that's next to the agenda.
All right, well, maybe I'll just...
You can stick around.
You can stick around.
Sit one row back.
Stay tuned.
My pizza's ready next door, but...
All right, I would entertain a motion to accept the report of the town moderator. I second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Aye.
Opposed, none?
We were, we were pleased to hear from the police that the police logs were available, but they're not really, they're dispatch logs.
Yes.
Yeah, everybody was like, really? Like a real town? And then we went and looked, and it was like, oh.
Everybody just wants to read whose name's in it, that's all.
It isn't, it's just they're all out for this, all out for that.
All right, moving on, we have our town newsletter.
I think, I was sitting next to Larry Langford, and he felt it was really imperative that we have, the boards have accurate information to dispense, because oftentimes on social media, the information is not correct, and people can be misled or whatever. And I think it would be a great thing now, I think a quarterly newsletter, I heard Harris, he said, oh, you'd like a monthly, and I'm thinking, you don't know how long, you know how much work that involves, you know? I mean, you know, we could set up some sort of, I mean, I'd be glad to help, but, you know, deadlines, you know? I mean, giving it each ward an option to say, hey, you know, we got this hearing coming up, or this is what we're doing, or, you know? Whatever, you know, and it would be, I guess people could access it online, but I also think we should print some things out. It'd be available here and maybe at the Seamer Center or, I don't know, we could take it at floodwater, you know? But, um, you know, maybe some of the, the stores or so, something, not, not a lot, because you don't wanna waste the paper, you know? But what was, what was your impression?
Was that people would like to have the option of paper copies, maybe something where you could opt in to have one, because especially if it comes out more like quarterly, they don't wanna hang on to it.
Right.
And so you want it to, you wanna ideally be able to have the paper one versus the PDF. I think there was a lot of interest in it being...
I mean, maybe we could push more people into...
Oh, totally.
Finally getting us email addresses and they can be on an email blast.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then...
Except when, when we get you a paper copy.
Not everybody has, does, does the digital.
Right.
You know, and that's important, I mean, it could be at the Buckland Library, there could be copies there, you know?
I think the major, the major thing that I don't think there was agreement on was what kind of stuff would go in it. And I know that when I, I ran, I had a moderator's newsletter for probably two or three years, four years, and then I only put in things that were somehow government-related, you know? And, and generally, like, there's gonna be a hearing about this, or the Solid Waste District is having a, you know, a thing or whatever. But on the other hand, you get a lot more readership potentially if you're also including cultural events. And like, where do you draw the line? Is moonlight magic information about street closures for the bridge, you know, for the ten K? You know, is, is that municipal, is it not? So I think that would be one thing to figure out.
Right, well, there's, there, from what Andrew Baker explained to me, there's municipal newsletters, and then there's community newsletters. You know, I could see having some community things, but we're not gonna say, hey, someone has a sale or they're, you know, our musical events, you know, unless it's a town-wide thing, you know? It should be, you know, like, say, Day in Buckland, that would be a good thing to put in, you know? But, you know, I, I think it's better to start quarterly and to see if it's sustainable. The worst thing to do is to say, oh, we're gonna do it every month, and, and it doesn't last. last.
Yeah, it was very sad to lose the one over there.
Yeah. Um, because, well, oh, you weren't here early, but the reason they lost it is because the town, because it was going to be a community, they only could, they could only fund a municipal newsletter. They went there for funding. So the library is interested in doing a community newsletter. So anyways, um, I don't know, what do you, what do you want to do about this?
I don't know, I can hear Joan and Phoebe, co-publishers, I see things happening here.
What about Abby Strauss?
I'll throw her in too.
I mean, you know, I, I think my two cents could be that, you know, I mean, if it's something that Shelburne's really looking at, trying to get back on, I mean, I, I don't, you know, kind of divide and conquer type of deal to where, you know, if you've got more people to work on it, I think it would make it certainly a lot easier.
That's a good point.
And, you know, we could certainly throw a little tidbit in, you know, Shelburne could have theirs, Buckland could have theirs, but it's all one. And then you could have, you know, so be like three sections.
I.
You'd have your community section, your Buckland section and your Shelburne section, but it's all getting, you know, it's all being done by one group.
Yeah, but I think Lori's getting a grant for the library to do this.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't, I know that we, you know, we supply money to it. I don't know how that would work, to tell you the truth.
Maybe there could be an addendum, like I know in the town of Charlemont, there's a town newsletter and it is printed out and made paper available, but it's also emailed and there's a separate board of health newsletter that just comes in the same email.
Right.
So, I mean, it might be possible to do something like Joan is saying, sort of start small and municipal, but just say to Lori, every time we put one out, just include it as an attachment in the thing you send out. So she's going to capture all kinds of Buckland residents that we might not, you know?
I mean, I don't know if you want to do something with, I don't think.
This is more your expertise than, than mine.
I don't know if the, the select board, except for Andrew, is interested in doing it.
Okay.
And, you know.
The others will follow.
I mean, because this is kind of something that you can sort of just gather information as it's coming in and then, you know.
Well, there are many things that are going to be applicable to both towns. You share the same health district, you share the same school district, you, you share the same police department, you know, that all those guys could have things, articles that would hit both.
Yeah.
But sure, we're talking short, you know, like maybe 200 words or something like that, you know? And deadlines, you have to have a deadline, you know, and you got to meet the deadline. And, um, I don't know.
Ruthless.
What?
Ruthless, I said.
Well, no, if you don't meet the deadline, it's, it's really very difficult, you know? And, you know, you, you don't need a huge treatise or something like that.
A lot of it's just, you know, being able to keep up with, you know, what each committee is, um, is, has been working on for that last quarter or what they've got coming up for the next quarter or.
Send them to the website. I mean, I think to your point, it doesn't have to be all the information there, it can be, and if you want to know more about what those bylaws look like, go to the website.
Yeah.
Except if you're not digitally, not a digital person, you're not going to go to the website.
You might walk in and ask for the copy.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, I don't know how you want to proceed on this.
I can answer your question about Abby is on the finance committee, I believe. She's that person who suddenly became a Buckland resident when the town line moved and her mother published the Ashfield news for years and years.
She's better for it. So when I, back, um, pre-pandemic, I had a newsletter that we put out quarterly.
Which I thought was good.
Yeah, um, we kept it very municipal. Um, and I never had a shortage of items to put into it. Um, so I don't think that getting material will be a challenge. I think there's plenty that either myself and, and other boards and committees can sort of direct. It just became too cumbersome. I'd like to blame the pandemic, but it really just became too cumbersome.
You may, go ahead.
But, but it was, it was, it was something that we printed copies of and put online and, um, and it seemed well, well received.
When it was printed, but was it like a folded paper, like four sides?
No, just, no, just the stapled at the top corner. Very low budget.
Oh, okay.
Very low budget.
How many pages?
It depended, usually about four or five.
But a well-placed staple.
Nothing better than a well-placed staple. Upper left-hand corner.
On a slight angle, just like that.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, but if you wanted to think about it, I mean, I think it was brought up that you can do printing at the prison. They do a really nice job at a reasonable price. I mean, it's, it's something to evolve. You know, you don't want to start up.
Maybe we should do a draft one and like a first one and with a little like survey in it that says like, does this work, would this work for you, you know?
Yeah.
So does, would you like to need some time or?
Sure.
I need your publishers. Okay.
Yes, you need Abby.
Well, I'm glad you're taking it. It's a great idea, but, uh, I don't have the skills for it and she's done this before. Joan has and you certainly have, so I think it'd be a great start.
Well, maybe Heather can join us, just to give some advice.
Yep, happy to.
Do you want to set it up? Okay.
Excellent, thank you really.
Okay. We ended up with a name.
I know, that's the fun part.
Buckland is better?
Not.
How about over the dam?
Over the dam, that's good.
Over the dam. I've smelled that correctly, that's all.
All right, uh, moving on to zip code conflicts. Yeah, see, another one that intrigues you.
Now I don't want to leave.
You don't have to.
Pizza.
So it looks like several residents have come forward with an interest in pursuing this as a volunteer project. Wonderful. Also, I'm not quite sure what we're, do we have contact information for said people?
Uh, so, uh, right now it looks like Bruce LaSalle and Larry Langford from the finance committee would like to participate in this, but in previously Jen Florial, Carmen, uh, Carmella.
Atlanta.
Yes, we are. And, um, who else has been on that short list of people that have come in and said that they would?
There's been quite a few.
Yeah, so we're going to call in all of those individuals and, uh, and get started on that, but I just want to make it less of a staff project. I mean, the, the reason that it hasn't really been able to get off the ground is because people have tried and we've, you know, we've, we've put together a list of concerns and, and it just hasn't gained any momentum because really we don't have the ability to dedicate time to it that it really requires.
I think that we'll get together and the first thing they've got to find out from the, uh, United States Postal Service, you know, if it can be done.
Yep.
And do we have, if we do, do we have to have a separate, if, let's say it goes just for the Buckland one, for the whole entire town of Buckland, do we have to have our own post office? I mean, road does and smaller.
Post office in Buckland.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry, yes, we do. Yeah, yeah.
And the one thing is for, for residents, you're going to have to change everything, your, you know, credit cards, your, you know, all, all your documentation will have to be changed with a new zip code.
For those that have a different zip code than the Buckland zip code.
Right.
So there are lots of people that have the Buckland zip code.
Yes, you, Shelburne Falls is just supposed to be in the, as they call it, Shelburne Falls Fire District, it really runs out at the edge of Route 2 and etc. And that's what original intention of that was, that would serve the supposedly the more crowded downtown areas and local areas here. But, yeah, I agree, it's, it's.
I mean, it's not just, it's not just everybody in, in downtown Buckland either though. I mean, it's, you know, you have people in Charlemont, uh, there's a lot of Ashfield residents that have, uh, there's, I believe, some Corrine residents that, that share the zip code, so.
I think you identified that there were, Buckland is served by four zip codes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So there is not an easy answer to this, which is again, another reason that it hasn't been accomplished.
It's getting the right people to start asking questions.
I don't think, and I don't think that, that right now we could say what the right and clear way through this is, but I think having a group that's willing to take it on, um, that is not contingent upon staff.
And it was a very practical group that you just mentioned there, so yes.
I know. Uh, actually Carmella was the one that found the post office how-to. Um, so they actually have a, uh, a PDF that you can download that tells you exactly how you go about changing the zip code. Um, so Carmella found that for us, so.
Excellent. So you'd be reaching out and assembling the troops?
I will not be, no, I will not. That's, I guess, was my point in the, um, agenda is that this will be a, a, a project that we're happy to support.
No, no, I'm saying you're just going to gather the troops.
I think Larry and Bruce are going to work on that, yep.
And I'm giving them the other names.
Yep, yep, yep.
Jamie, yep.
I have a very large folder in my office and I have to pass on with some color research and things that have been done in the past when, I know, was it Warren's office was contacted at one time? I have quite a bit of data on it, actually.
We're almost there.
So I'll rephrase it. You have assembled the troops.
Yes, yes.
And they are going to task.
It's, yeah, it, it just, I don't want to have.
This is not a Heather project. We know.
Or a Pam project or, or a care project or, or even a, on a leisure project. We'll all be very supportive of the effort because it will ultimately benefit every one of our offices, but.
Yep. Yep, understood. All right, uh, Buckland Police Building, future use.
Want to take this one, Joan?
Um, well, we met with Alberto and Allison, yes, and from the, uh, they were from the Community Health Center of Franklin County and they would love to expand services to West County. And I think there was some sort of talk about going at Mohawk Trail, but that doesn't seem to be working out, um, anyways. And they were talking about modular buildings and all this stuff. So we met, um, Heather and Officer Petten Gill, we met them at the, at the old police station and they looked around. And I had never been there, I had no reason to go to the police station, so, but I was surprised at how large it was, you know? And I, um, so, you know, it's kind of, you know, um, they, they seemed interested in whether it's a matter of, uh, we rent it, although, um, it, it needs certainly work inside or whether we sell it, I think that that's a decision the town has to make. What else could you say about what they?
So they've been actively looking for, uh, service space in West, in West County.
Right.
For some time. Uh, they have a, um, their, their, their main operation is in Grerefield. Um, they are renting space there from, from the state. Um, they own property in the town of, uh, of Orange and they have facilities there, um, but they really would like something further up here on the trail. Um, they have been working with Furcog, um, as well as, um, some of our local physicians, um, trying to establish this. So they did have some, good progress was made at the, um, at the high school, um, at the Mohawk Trail, Mohawk Trail Regional High School, but they, because of their facilities and their sustainability study, they are not in a position to make any long-term commitments to anybody, uh, for, for space up there. And so although I don't think that the health center is, is opposed to waiting, I think in the meantime, they really want to pursue all the other options. Um, we're, the town has determined that we do not need a substation, um, a, a substation for the police department in Buckland at that location and sort of our, our, our feeling that building is going to become more of a challenge. Um, so the options that you would have is, um, if you were interested in going and discussing this further with, with them, um, is you would have to go to a town meeting and get town meeting's approval to dispose of the property, to sell it. I don't think a municipality makes a super landlord. Um, we have a difficult time maintaining the buildings that we haven't invested in interest in. I think we would even have a bigger challenge maintaining a building, especially that had such a forward-facing, um, public use. Um, there's so many improvements that would need to be made in order for them to comply with, um, with the, with DEP and, and, um, I just don't think that we would be up to that from a financial standpoint and, and as well as staff. Because then you've got to have somebody that's sort of on-call to address things as they break and.
Yeah.
Um, so disposal seems to be the one that makes the most sense. Um, they have not, we haven't really gone to that level of, um, um, conversation, but we have a old appraisal that was done a few years ago, so I'm going to forward that to them. Um, we need to talk about whether or not a phase-one environmental would have to be done, um, just to rule out any possible liability and contamination. And then lastly, uh, they would want to have an architect come in, that they would, you know, obviously have somebody come in and go through the building and make sure that the building, um, structurally meets their needs. Um, so there's a lot of steps, but they were, they were enthusiastic about it and I know that that's a property that, again, as much as I would have liked to have seen it at full capacity as a municipal use, it's unlikely we'll be able to achieve that, so.
They, you know, by doing the building, they, they would need a lot more plumbing in there because of all the hand washing and all the prep work. They, they did like the safe and they thought that'd be a good way to store, um, certain medications in there, but I was just really surprised at the, the amount of space, plus there was the basement. And, um, yeah, they, they seemed rather enthused and, well, how did we leave it? They were going to get back to us? Are you going to send them the appraisal, right? Or, and they're going to, what was going to happen next? Do you remember?
Um, yeah, they've already reached back out thanking us for meeting them and with a short list of documents that we can exchange, so.
Okay.
It, it may go nowhere, but it's, and the other thing is we still have to go through public procurement. We can't just, you know, sell it direct, so it would have to be an, an RFQ or an RFP or an auction. Um, you know, there's, there's still procurement thresholds, but that's something we could address further, further down the line.
Okay. Anything else on the building?
I don't think so. I mean, I was, I was glad that Joan was there and, and got to see the building and.
Yeah, I mean, from the outside, it looks like a health center, you know, with, with the brick and you get the, uh, but, you know, it's, we'll see what happens, you know? Like you said, it'll go nowhere, but they seemed enthusiastic and I know that Alberto wasn't excited about having modular units for the, um, because they don't last, you know? It's, uh, anyways, we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Documents to sign, um, contract and grant documents. We have the, uh, we have a conflict of interest disclosure from Andrea Donlin, Donlin and Martha Taff Ferguson. Both, I believe, are on the planning board. So Andrea's first. Just trying to kind of follow on this Heather.
One's an animal inspector, uh, Martha is.
Yep, that's right. So I mean, is there, so what I'm seeing here is there's no, so she works for the Franklin County Solid Waste Management?
No, neither of them work. They both serve on the board of directors. It's a volunteer position that they, but as such, um, the town of Buckland has a contract with the solid waste district. Um, and they're, they also wear other hats for the town of Buckland. Uh, Andrea serves on the planning board and Marty is our animal inspector, um, although the planning board position is, is, is a volunteer and Marty receives a small stipend, I believe it's $800 a year for those services. But as such, they're considered special municipal employees, which then puts them in the need to declare the financial. in the need to declare the financial interest because the town has a contract with the Solid Waste District. So this is a declaration. They obviously don't have any direct financial gain from this, but it is something that we have to have on, have on file.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, again, with the small community, um, you know, being that there's not going to be any financial gain, I would make a motion to, um... To, to say that there's no conflict of interest and to allow them to continue on.
I'll have a second minute.
Uh, any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Municipal aggregation of the H-3852. Sign on, sign on letter, letter to legislators with a fact sheet and draft comments to DPU. Further information on that, Heather, that you'd like to...
So, as you know...
I'd like you to read this, the whole write-up.
Well, you don't, you, but as you, as you know, the town participates in a municipal aggregation program. It's very beneficial to the residents of Buckland that participate. There is, in addition to the, um, financial savings for those that choose the basic option, it also provides, um, other alternative, um, alternative resource options, such as wind and solar, for those that are, are more minded towards how they get their electricity. So it serves a lot of purposes. The DPU, the Department of Public Utilities, is looking to change the regulations. They went to complete deregulation, and now they are trying to claw back some of that, which would impact the town's contract with Colonial, and it would also impact how we are able to provide the municipal aggregation. Colonial has put together, um, a letter to, uh, several legislators that are working to, to create legislation that protects municipalities' right to municipal aggregation. And so there's a letter to support that legislation. And then there's also a document that is to the DPU that offers comment pushing back on what their attempts are, which is to further restrict. So working the issue from both sides, both supporting legislation that protects our rights, and then letting the DPU know that we would really rather that they don't interfere, that what's, what they have in place is working well. So you have both documents in front of you. If you don't want to sign tonight, if you want to take some time with it, we do have a little bit of time before the DPU comment period is up. But if you're comfortable signing, I've sat in on two or three, um, calls with all of the other town administrators that are also participating, that are representing communities that participate in the same municipal aggregation program, and everybody is sort of asking their select boards to do this. I think there's thirteen of us in this particular contract that are impacted. So this is in front of all of your neighbors as well. But I, I do recognize that it's a lot of information. But Colonial has been fantastic. They, um, they continue to explain things in such a way that makes it really manageable for somebody like myself to understand, and they are available, they're always at the other end of, of the phone for residents who, when they call and have questions as well. So I'm happy to put this information after it's executed on the website, and if residents had questions or concerns, then they could reach out to Colonial directly as well.
Okay. Any request to table this so we can look further into it? Or are you guys comfortable voting on it tonight?
I wouldn't mind looking more into it.
Okay. So we will table this to our, um, next meeting? To where we can kind of dig into it a little bit more?
Right.
Good idea. October 10th, isn't it?
Yep, your next meeting is October 10th.
Bring that, you already got your first agenda item or document item. All right. We have a letter of hire for an MVP grant coordinator. Ms. Cornish.
So before there's any concern about the town administrator creating new positions, this is a, uh, this is, because a new position would obviously come to the board and, and through personnel. This is grant-funded only. It is only to help me administer the MVP grant. Allison has an extensive background in climate, um, climate issues and is incredibly familiar with the jargon and the needs. And she lives here in town and has been active in the community, and she'll be a great asset. But the position is only valid so long as we have the grant funding to support it. It is, there is no impact to the town budget.
And she understands that as well?
Yep, yep, yep. She actually prefers it that way.
Excellent. I would move the motion to authorize the town administrator to sign a letter of hire for Allison Cornish to serve as the town MVP's coordinator. Said salary to be paid with MVP grant funds only.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Did you want to throw your plug in for, um, what you had in here? For seeking a board's clerk?
So Allison, at the, currently serves as our board's clerk, so taking minutes and posting minutes for the zoning board, planning board, Board of Health and Conservation Commission, which are our permitting agencies. That is a position that is about four hours a week, but sometimes it'll be less and sometimes it'll be more. Average is out to about sixteen hours a month, but some weeks are certainly busier. So she will be leaving that position at the end of October. And, um, for the record, she planned to leave that position at the end of October before I asked her to...
Erobed her back in?
Erobed her back in. So it, we, I don't want any of our permitting boards to think that I just offered her something different. But anyways, so that position is, is available. It's a great way to get involved with the, with the community, learn about what's, what's going on. It is, it is a paid position. I believe it's about sixteen and a half dollars an hour. And it's certainly, besides the meetings themselves, the hours are certainly flexible. And Conservation is still meeting via Zoom. I believe the Board of Health is still meeting, Board of Health... Conservation is still meeting via Zoom, but the others, I think, are now meeting in person, so there's a, you know, hybrid.
Okay. Prements and licenses, we have none tonight. Minutes. Did we get, we haven't gotten minutes for August and September?
No.
Mary's still on the mend.
She is.
So...
I'm just keeping them on the agenda so I don't lose track of...
Yep.
Yeah.
We, uh, we're hoping for a speedy recovery for her. Payroll and vendor warrants for September 26th. I did get a chance to look those over. I'm not sure if you guys did?
I looked online, yes.
Okay. I would accept the motion to approve both the payroll and vendor warrants for September 26, 2023.
Second, yep.
Any further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Items not reasonably anticipated by Chair forty-eight hours in advance? I have nothing. Any select board member concerns? Town administrators report.
I don't have anything for you this evening.
Thank you.
It didn't even just come from us.
This is a long meeting, yeah.
Oh, no, well, no. So as always, I'm, I'm happy to answer questions on any of the ongoing... Oh, my goodness!
No questions, no.
One question. Anything, any update on North Street?
No news is good news on that project.
All right. Any public comment? Ms. Kelsey?
I wanted to ask this question a couple weeks ago, but that was really an exhausting meeting. So I knew we wanted to leave. And my question is to do with Comcast and the taking of this meeting. So I found, I ran into this before, and I was thinking, thinking with the winter once coming on, quicker than I want them to, that I have not been able, two weeks ago was a good example, if I had stayed home, because I stayed long enough at home to waiting till 5:30, and the meeting wasn't coming on my TV. The other thing I noticed last Saturday, Shelburne Slapboard was filmed on Channel Nine, and it was an old meeting, and then supposedly Buckland would come on, but Buckland never came on, it switched over to some other programming. So my question is this, who would actually be able to look into that if I called Comcast? They haven't been able to tell me anything. But mostly, I want to be able to watch it live at home in the winter months.
So Lynn has brought this to my attention, and I think my, my initial question would be to reach out to the Falls Cable staff. I know that they're, they are a, a small but mighty staff, and we do rely on them. But it could be just that they've either had a change in personnel and are just not, not updating their, um, scheduling on the website as often, but we can certainly look into it. And, and I think it just shows that, that there's an interest in, in, you know, that what they're doing, what, you know, Dana's coming and spending time with us every other Tuesday has, has value because people do want to see the meetings. And just letting us know when those meetings are going to be and, and how we can best view them is only helping to make that a stronger bond. So, yes, I will follow up. I will try to phrase it in as, with as much appreciation and positivity as possible so that they keep coming.
Yes. I've put it out there well in advance of Snowball.
Yeah.
I'm quick with that.
Yeah.
I do have one other quick question, or maybe just a comment. Regarding the bike park, it seemed to me that, I thought I heard a snippet that a potty facility was already asked for, and it seems like this group is trying to go with the beautification message rather than a need message. I'd like to see a potty there. I think there was a lot of, um, a lot of things that need to be cleaned up on, be like the messaging.
Okay. Anything?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Dana, anything?
No.
Excellent. Ladies, I know you already had your time to shine tonight, but... Just sticking around to yell at me after the meeting. Gotcha. Volunteer recognition. Andrea Donlin and Marty Taft Ferguson. We mentioned the two of the roles each of these women serve in our community, but we could each list a half dozen official and unofficial jobs they do, all for the betterment of the town.
Yes, sir.
Yeah? Not to mention all of our other, you know, volunteer board members.
Oh, I know, I know, but...
Not to take away from them, but, you know...
This was, this was who I'm picking on today.
All right. Move on to maybe a couple more next meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Upcoming meetings, October 10th, 2023, and October 24th will be our next month's select board meetings. At this time, both at 5:30, I'm assuming? Any other announcements? Anything else that anybody can think of? I would move to the general.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you for joining.